My colleague is ready for meeting order. It's Monday, March 2nd. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Harrington?
Here.
Mr. Maryhill?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Douglas?
Here.
Mr. Fairby?
Here.
Mr. Blades?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
Here.
Mr. Skozbala?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Pleady?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Marnell?
Here.
Mr. Woodson?
Here.
Mr. Grinnell?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Mr. Goyland?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
We do have a couple guests. First on the agenda is Ms. Vicki Dickerson. Vicki, please come forward.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This should be my last time here, I think, I hope. This is a good day. Edward Murray. His nickname was Bingo. He smoked a pipe and rang the large bell outside the kitchen calling out to breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Georgia James. He had one leg and did all sorts of chores around the county home and helped at the Westport Fair. Felitas Brace. His nickname was Fleet. He always had a flyswatter but never seemed to kill a fly. Wanda Glad, World War Veteran. Couldn't speak due to a serious head injury but always had a smile. These people are just four of the 378 who were buried in the county home cemetery. This Board of Supervisors unanimously voted to correct a 30-year-old mistake. On behalf of hundreds of concerned citizens, thank you. On a personal note, I would like to thank Mr. Gardner. You were approached in June and were 100% getting the cemetery back into the county ownership. Mr. Goyland, you, once you heard the background encouraging me to keep moving forward, you both were always available and kept me informed. Mr. Douglas, you made it one of your top priorities for 2015. Mr. Manning, you worked very hard handling all the legal aspects, even going back to Roman law to get the job done. Teresa Sealy for her continued support and Pete Demola for bringing the issue to the public's attention again. In 2011, there was a fundraiser in Essex and Willesboro to replace the flagpole. A quilt was donated to Raffle. Several organizations, including the Kiwanis, also donated money. There is an account of $1,300 waiting to be put to use. The first will be the flagpole. Second, there is a grave marked "Unknown Woman Died 1931." We now know who she was, Millie Flint. With some of the money, her name will be engraved on her stone. There will be no expense to the county. In the near future, when people go by this site in Willesboro, they will know that it is the Essex County Home Cemetery, not just a field. Thank you all and let the work begin. Randy and Vicki Dickerson.
Thank you very much, your stickers for coming today.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any comments they'd like to take? Dan?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mrs. Dickerson. I just want to be clear that we've done the contract. We haven't obtained title yet, but Mrs. Morgan's been very easy and good to work with and I anticipate, we need to have the property surveyed and with the snow, that probably is not going to happen for a month or so, so this will probably be a couple, two and a half months down the line before we actually get title, but as far as I know, there are no impediments to us being able to get the property at this time.
Thank you very much. Our next guest is Ms. Elizabeth Lortowski. She's the Assistant Director of Community and Staff Relations at Mountain Lake Services. Elizabeth? Hi, how are you?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today and to speak a bit regarding National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Our Executive Director Marty Nephew is unable to join us today because he's actually in Albany lobbying for the rights of people with disabilities. We have been celebrating National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month for nearly 30 years. This celebration was once called Legacy of Love, and we feel our agency has made deep impact for the good for all of our communities during the past 40 years. A wonderful legacy we celebrate today as well. In each of our communities, individuals with disabilities work hard through volunteer efforts to enrich their towns. They enjoy being part of, an integral member of their communities with volunteer efforts at places such as fire departments, senior centers, SPCA's, churches, schools, and nursing homes. As part of Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, our parent organization, NYSRC Inc., has once again organized President's Project Week designated for the last week in March. This initiative is a statewide effort to have people with disabilities give back to their communities by focusing on volunteering. As part of this effort, Mountain Lake Services self-advocates are organizing and coordinating a collection of non-perishable food items throughout Essex County to be donated to local food banks. This year, we will be hosting one community event as well. On Friday, March 27th, there will be a family fun night at the Elizabeth Town Lewis Central School beginning at 5:00 PM. We hope you and your family can join us. As an agency, we are extremely proud of the high-quality services we provide to over 500 individuals in so many different programs, including residential services, support employment, our Work Center Essex Industries, day habilitation, early childhood intervention, and home-based supports and services. Our focus on quality since 1974 has led us on a path to be accredited by the Council on Quality and Leadership. CQL is an organization that recognizes outstanding service providers internationally. We actually received our accreditation in March of 2013 and are accredited through 2017. For more information, we provide you with a variety of materials about our agency. Included in this packet is a brochure describing each of the services we provide, a brochure about our membership, and a detailed list of employees per town of residents. When people with disabilities are welcomed into local neighborhoods, workplaces, houses of worship, and schools, everyone wins. During Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, we encourage you to better understand the individuals we serve and their impact in your community. If you'd like an opportunity to tour one of our sites, I encourage you to give me a call. Be more than welcome to set up a visit. My contact information has been provided in your packet. Thank you once again for your time this morning.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Before you leave, is there anybody from the board that has any questions or comments? Elizabeth, I do have a proclamation for you. It's a proclamation from this board, this body, it's Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Whereas 40 years ago, Mountain Lake Services was founded as a way for families to receive support for their children with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Essex County. Dedicated families that were instrumental in forming the organization strive for community-based services that were of high quality and added value to the lives of their children, and whereas what began as a small agency with only a handful of employees and service recipients has evolved into an organization which serves over 500 people with intellectual and developmental disabilities and is currently the largest employer in the county. The success of Mountain Lake Services can be attributed to the drive, commitment, and diligence of all involved, including individuals, their families, and our communities. And whereas, Mountain Lake Services will continue to provide innovative and exceptional support to individuals through Essex County, this organization remains committed to its mission while assisting people to develop independence, relationships, teamwork, individualism, choice, respect, and integrity. And whereas, Mountain Lake Services will continue to build on its history of increasing public awareness and understanding of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities through community education and participation. As a result, adults and children throughout the county may recognize the importance of social roles, productivity, meaningful work, and volunteerism, and community involvement to all people regardless of ability. Now therefore, I renounce the Chairman and on behalf of my colleagues on the Essex County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim March 2015 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, celebrating the achievements and contributions of people with developmental disabilities in Essex County and urge all citizens to observe this proclamation. This proclamation is issued the second day of March 2015. Let me give you my phone to my colleagues, and I thank you very much for your commitment. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to thank you, Mountain Lake Services, for raising the ball to town in Willesboro and within the last year, as far as giving back, you know, this partnership between Mountain Lake Services and the communities they live in, they took over our food shelf and food bank and have been running it very successfully and more successfully than town ever could and want to thank Mountain Lake Services for doing that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Sergeant. Anybody else? Thank you again. With that, we'll move right to resolutions.
Resolution number 63, authorizing budget amendments for various departments.
Moved by Mr. Skozbala. Is there a second? Mr. Morrow, under discussion? Roll call both please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 64, accepting, adopting, and placing on file policies, plans, procedures, and annual reports.
Moved by Mr. Grinnell. Seconded by Mr. Gardner. Under discussion? Roll call both please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Hold a second. All right. Resolution 65, authorizing issuance of a permit to Lake Placid Marathon Inspiration Sports LLC for the use of county roadways for the 2015 Lake Placid Marathon.
Moved by Mr. Pleady. Seconded by Mr. Fairby. Under discussion? All favor, signature by percent aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All keep caring.
Resolution number 66, authorizing the purchasing agent to award contract to Green Mountain Communications Incorporated in the amount of $8,080 for the Terry Mountain Radio Inventory and Inspection from budgeted funds.
Moved by Mr. Maryhill. Seconded by Mr. Preston. Under discussion? Roll call both please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 68, authorizing for the submission of the Community Development Block Grant application, homebuyer assistance program.
Moved by Mr. Connell. Seconded by Mr. Grinnell. Under discussion? All favor, signature by percent aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All keep caring.
Resolution 69, authorizing for the submission of Community Development Block Grant application for countywide septic system replacement program.
Moved by Mr. Woodson. Seconded by Mr. Marnell. Under discussion? All favor, signature by percent aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All keep caring.
Resolution 70, of condolence to the family of James B. Sherman.
Moved by Mrs. Skozbala. Thank you.
Resolution 71, requesting FEMA or state reimbursement to help relieve Essex County of financial stress from damages caused by the long stretch of low freezing temperatures.
Moved by Mr. Grinnell. Any second?
Resolution number 72, of condolence to the family of Gordon R. Duke Decker.
Moved by Mr. Connell. Thank you.
Resolution number 73, requesting that the State of New York increase funding to the town of North Elbon Lake Placid and the Olympic Regional Development Authority for badly needed repairs, updates, and modernization to New York State's Olympic venues.
Moved by Mr. Pleady. Now, second?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Resolution number 74, establishing a capital reserve fund to finance a type of capital equipment for the Transportation Department from surplus funds obtained from the sale of trolleys.
Moved by Mr. Marnell. Seconded by Mr. Harrington. Under discussion? Roll call both please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
We're going to go to resolutions from the floor that are on your desk, and Judy, if you could read the ones that were placed on the desk, that would be helpful.
Okay. Resolution, adopting proposed local law number two of 2015 entitled allowing for common safe items to be excluded from the fireworks and dangerous fireworks definitions contained in Chapter 477 of Laws of the State of New York for 2014.
Moved by Mr. Moore. Second, do I have 12 to allow that on the floor? Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Yes, you do.
Do I have a second? Mr. Cannon, we'll second that. Under discussion?
I just have one thing to add.
Okay.
I'm going to make a minor amendment to this that we really don't have to vote on in the body of the second, be it further resolved. It says in further providing for the manufacture, sale, and use of sparkler devices, it'll now read in further providing for the license and authorized manufacture, sale, and use of sparklers. And that, those words, license and authorized, will be associated with the word manufacture throughout the local law.
That's you guys, the mover and the second, if I'm with that language in there. Anybody have anything else to add? Under discussion? We'll do a roll call on this one.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution, authorizing to purchase an oversized solar power radar speed sign to be replaced by the ferry in Port Cat in the town of Chesterfield. It's a Creating Healthy Places grant in the amount up to $6,890.
Moved by Mr. Morrow. Seconded by Mr. Blades. Under discussion?
We have 12.
I need 12 to allow that on the floor. I don't know why I'm doing this today.
Yes, you do.
12. Seconded by Mr. Blades. Under discussion? Mr. Preston?
I've been told that if this gets approved, I'm not getting my water bike, but I'll go along with it for Mr. Morrow.
Further comments or questions? Roll call both please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution, adopting a home rule request for an action and adoption by the New York State Assembly of Assembly Bill A 5315 and an action and adoption by the New York State Senate of Senate Bill S 3522 extending the authorization granted Essex County by the State of New York to adopt and amend local laws imposing a tax of 25 cents for each $100 on each remaining major fraction thereof on principal debt incurred by mortgage on real property situated within the county until December 1st, 2018.
Moved by Mr. Skozbala. Do I have 12 to allow that on the floor?
Yes, you do.
I have a second. Mr. Moore, under discussion? We need two-thirds hold on this, just to be clear, so roll call both please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution, adopting a home rule request for an action and adoption by the New York State Assembly of Assembly Bill A 5314 and an action and adoption by the New York State Senate of Senate Bill S 3997 to extend the authorization granted Essex County pursuant to New York State Tax Law Section 1210 I 36 to impose an additional 1% of sales and compensating use taxes for the period beginning December 1st, 2015 and ending November 30th, 2017.
Moved by Mr. Skozbala. 12 to allow that on the floor.
Yes, you do.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Under discussion? Again, we need two-thirds on this, so roll call both please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution, adopting a home rule request for an action and adoption by the New York State Assembly of Assembly Bill A 5315 and an action and adoption by the New York State Senate of Senate Bill S 3997 to extend the authorization granted Essex County by the State of New York to adopt and amend local laws imposing a tax of 25 cents for each $100
have to do this in executive session, and Mr. Manning is so... Do you want to do that, to bring us up to date what your findings are? I know there's, while we were away, there was numerous people involved, including Mr. Manning, so I...
I think we should.
Okay.
So then I would move for an executive session.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Preston. Do I have twelve to allow out?
Should be brief.
Yes.
For the purpose of discussing litigation, possible litigation, we got a little Whiteface out. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Jaquish. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No. I've got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is Jim Dugan going to be allowed in?
Jim Dugan will get out in, yeah. Okay. So we are into executive session. Time is 10:40, and we're now in executive session. And we'll go with a little explanation from the county attorney where we're at in this process.
Dan? Um, in executive session, there was nothing done of any purpose, but we do need to... There was legal advice given with respect to a certain matter involving integrated rigging and construction, IRC, and the building which houses our microwave equipment up on Whiteface Mountain. We've had some problems, so at this time, I'd like to ask, I would counsel you that you should proceed under the surety bond issued with respect to IRC, and that we contact the surety to ensure that we protect our rights and that we have set up a meeting to come to some sort of solution to the problem at the building.
Anybody want to move that? Moved by Mr. Grinnell. Do I have twelve to allow out on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Seconded by Mr. Preston. Under discussion? Anybody have any comments? Do a roll call, both.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazabala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Okay, the next item that was in your packet, and I'll ask Mr. Skazabala to bring it to finance to discuss. Mr. Diskin's aware of it. Dan and I have both had conversations with Mr. Dan Alexander from Gettin' Publications. I don't think we should do any movement on this today, but I did forward you the email to take a look at it. Mr. Alexander would like to come to finance, Tom, if you're allowing that to happen. He would like to address the board. So I did put that in your packet. And the other things that are in your packet is, I asked Mr. Manning, Mr. Preston wants to bring something forward, and I had Mr. Manning give us information that he provided us back in 2006. So, Mr. Preston?
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. This is in regards to the occupancy tax, and over the weekend, I was brought a petition from members of the lodging and the tourism community in regards to the occupancy tax, and I'm going to read it. "We members of the lodging and tourism community of Essex County do hereby petition, Board of Supervisors, to address the inequities that currently exist in the short-term rental market. The lack of regulation of the short-term real estate rental market is having an adverse effect on our businesses. The lack of collection of occupancy tax provides a competitive advantage to the individuals and homeowners that rent their homes, apartments, and condos for short-term rentals as defined by Essex County local law. In particular, we would like the Board of Supervisors to modify the existing local law to include occupancy tax collection on all short-term rentals, including private homes, condos, and apartments. Changes to this local law will provide benefits to all residents of Essex County." And there's approximately, in these petitions, approximately sixty lodging and business owners that have signed this petition. I know the entire, this is my eighth year in office, and I've heard about this for the entire eight years I've been in office, that the vacation rentals are not paying occupancy tax, and basically, they are getting a free ride. The motels are funding everything that we have the contract with roost as far as marketing of this county and the tourism, and people that have vacation rentals aren't paying, are contributing towards that. And I know in just the tiny community of Wilmington, we have now over fifty vacation rentals, in just Wilmington alone. And not only are they not contributing occupancy tax, in some cases, they're actually changing complete neighborhoods where, at one time, you had single-family dwellings with families living there, and now, next door, there's twelve people there partying over the weekend. That's just another effect. But this is, it's huge. I hear about it all the time, and the petition was brought to me from the Whiteface Region Visitors Bureau, and I would like to hear what Dan has to say about it, but I would urge that the county, if we need to modify something to include these vacation rentals, that we do it, because at this point, it is not fair to the hotel owners that they are getting away without having to pay this tax when it is clearly tourism-related.
So, Mr. Preston, so we can back up here, just where we're at with this. You had requested to bring this forward to me because you are going to be absent next week.
Yes.
We did have a request from the person that was circulating petition, Mr. Bert Yost.
Yes.
I did put him in touch with Mr. Pleady. Mr. Pleady has afforded him the courtesy of the floor for next week's meeting, so this issue is going to be dealt with at that time. And at this time, Mr. Manning provided this information that he provided to Mr. Yost back in 2006. So, courtesy to Mr. Pleady, I'm going to turn it over to him, and I know he's going to work on addressing this issue. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pleady, because I know he's working on addressing this issue next week, and we'll go from there and let it go through committee. But, Mr. Pleady?
I'm just going to say, I sent an email to Bert this morning confirming the fact he's on for 10:30 next week, but I'm not going to give any else. This is something that should go through committee first. I don't mind you telling, I just, we always get into this argument discussing things before you even goes through committee. It just needs to go through committee, and then from there, it takes its normal course.
I agree. I just had a courtesy to my colleague, Mr. Preston, he said he was going to bring this forward because he's going to be absent next week, so we could voice his concerns, but I told him that we would not be taking hold on any of this today, that would have to go through your Committee of Economic Development. Does anybody have any question? This way, you get the board, you also get to look at the information. If you have any specific legal questions, you should get in touch with Mr. Manning and Mr. Pleady.
No, I want to make it very clear that I'm not going to be voting on this, so I'm chair of the committee with the discussion, but I have business interests that benefit from this type of thing, so I would recuse myself from any vote on this particular issue. I want to make that very clear right now. That being said, I also think it's fair to discuss both sides of the issue.
Mr. Blades?
I won't be here next week, but I have a question, and that's in regards to the enforcement of the possibility of enacting new regulations. Would we be able to enforce with the personnel we now currently have?
Can I respectfully ask that you hold that until next week?
That's why I asked it today. I won't be here next week.
If you could send in an email to Mr. Pleady. Just in all fairness, I don't want to get too carried away with this because of all fairness of trying to make things go through committee, that I think, Mr. Blaze, and I'm not trying to cut you short, if you could just put that in a request to Mr. Pleady, and we share that through committee, I would appreciate it. I understand what you're getting at, but I'm afraid what this is going to do, that it's going to open up a whole discussion before the board gets to review, because some of the board members that are sitting here today weren't here in 2006. And just out of all fairness, I want to review it all, so I'm sorry. I'm not going to allow the discussion on this, I'm sorry.
You don't need to be sorry.
Mr. Maryhill?
Not discussion today, but I would request, I noticed Mr. Taylor is here in the audience today, that he could possibly give us a preemptive preparatory report on that same consideration for committee, not today, but so that there's some preparation also that we can...
I think he's aware of that now, that this topic's been brought to the floor. I think he's aware of the fact that we're going to be called upon next week to discuss that particular issue.
And Mr. Manning will be there too, so I think I'm going to cut it there, and you can get mad at me if you want, but I think in all fairness to the committee process, I'm going to leave it to the committee that's meeting next week.
Just one quick question. Are we discussing, I mean, is this, are we talking campgrounds also here?
No, I'm going to please wait on that too. I understand. I think it's in our best interest to bring it through the committee. I don't want it, because a lot of people have not read this.
Okay, we're going to discuss anything you want to discuss next, next...
Thank you.
I will allow you...
I just, I didn't know if we were...
Sorry, I made a stop video.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to bring forward besides that issue? Mr. Gardner?
I'd like to just thank Essex County for helping us out, especially Dan Manning, Mike Deskin, Joe Laucha, and all the supervisors that have called and offered help to the non-Essays during our time here. And just to recommend that we don't release the grant, like Deskin and I were talking, that it might be wise for all of the towns to sign that agreement with the county to help them in case something happens with their town burden, that they can, it'll move on, and the county will step in and help them instead of waiting. You can do it now, just in place, that's all it does for you, but it might be a good idea.
To be proactive and have a shared service agreement, I think Mr. Palmer, I'm talking to Mr. Manning about it, and we could probably get something in place to do that. I think it's a good idea, but I think Dan's going to talk to Dan about it, but go ahead.
I don't mean to interrupt, but we already have a resolution in place that allows us to enter into similar agreements with all towns.
Go ahead.
But that's a great idea. We did it long ago.
It's a good place.
Yeah, we did it in 2007. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you, Mr. Inby. Mr. Skazabala?
Yes. I apologize that I didn't bring this through committee, but I would like to offer a resolution of congratulations to Julia Podras on her 103rd birthday.
Do I have to...
Yes, you do.
Can you name him a second?
Thank you.
Mr. Skazabala, anything else?
No.
I'll wait till committee. Mr. Grinnell?
I know this is going back to the previous issue, but Tom wanted me to ask, this shit is going to be part of that. If there are amenities offered, no, but if, yes, if they provide towels...
Less than a week.
Anything else that could come before this committee? If not, we stand and done.